So we're going to call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. The first thing on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any changes to the agenda? Okay, any discussion? Okay, no discussion. Do I hear a motion then to approve the agenda as submitted?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
And a second, so that was Damian, first motion, second motion?
This is Peter, I'll second it.
Okay.
All right, I'll run down the list and if you could just say yea or nay if you, in your response to that motion, I'm Bob.
Yea.
Damian?
Yea.
Justin?
Yea.
Laura?
Yea.
Peter?
Yea.
Eve?
Yes.
And Gary Pettis?
Yes.
That motion passes seven oh.
Okay, so we'll move on with the agenda. The next item is the minutes from last month. They were not included in the packet. You want to tell us, because though there's nothing to approve this month, you want to tell us when we're going to see them, Nick?
Yes, Madam Chair, the minutes for last month's meeting were not ready in time due to various circumstances. They did not get completed. So this evening, I think we could just get a motion to, I don't even know if we need a motion, but they'll be on the January agenda for approval. So I don't think we need a motion.
Right, there's nothing to prove or, you know, when they come, they come.
Yep.
Okay, so on to the public hearings then. The first item is a variance for a Met Council lift station in Minnetrista. You want to tell us about that, Nick?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Some of you may recall, this was previously submitted and the city approved variances for the same site, the L-24 lift station. And maybe the applicant can give a little history if it's needed as to where we are, why that one didn't make it through. I think in part in the narrative it's covered due to some downsizing and other things like that. But yeah, they also in this revised submittal was able to eliminate the need for a rear yard setback variance. So we're only looking at a front yard and a wetland setback variance for the upgrades at the L-24 lift station and the associated equipment necessary for that to function. Like I said, some of the commission will recall, this is a second go around, so I won't go in too in-depth. But your staff report covers the variance review criteria that we look at when a variance is submitted and reviewed. Believe it checks all the boxes, much like the previous submittal. We sent notices to everyone within 500 feet and did not receive any written comment or any phone inquiries in regards to this request. So within your staff report, we'd look for you to open the public hearing, give anyone here a chance to speak, close the public hearing, and then take a look at all the record in front of you before making a decision, which would be to recommend the city council approve the requested variances based on the findings of fact in the staff report and subject to those certain conditions. So I'm here, if you have any questions of myself, if anyone that wasn't here, the first time, I think it was 2016, 2015, somewhere in that range, might be happy to answer questions. I do, see, I believe we got a couple, a couple people here from the applicant side that can also answer questions. Yeah.
So did the applicant just want to do an overview of it, or it's pretty much the same? Any, any, anything that they want to say? Otherwise, do the commissioners have some questions for Nick or actually the applicant?
Madam Chairperson, this is Peter Vickery. I have a question. I couldn't, reading through it, I wasn't sure, how much of the area is going to be hard cover? It looks like it's going to kind of fill the space.
Yeah, in one of the diagrams, I believe they break down the lot coverage. I think it's a total of 22% when you don't factor in the armored turf. I included some exhibits and some examples that the applicant provided. So you can see that that area, I mean, it looks like grass. It's got that, you know, whatever you want to call it, that subsurface webbing that helps support the additional traffic. But, you know, on top of the surface, it looks all like grass to me. So that wasn't included in the calculation. But yeah, so that would be 22%, you know, excluding that armored turf.
Okay, thank you.
So is the armored turf 100% permeable, considered 100% permeable then?
That's what I was gathering, but hopefully maybe the applicant can help speak to that.
Yes, I'm Karen Erickson, engineer.
You need to give your address, too.
Okay, 991 Cottage Place, Shoreview, Minnesota.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, the armored turf is pervious. So it's like a honeycomb, plastic honeycomb. And then underneath it is different layers of rock, so the water can drain through the previous pavement. And there is a, on the application or the submittal, Nick did include a detailed example of what it looks like. So I'm trying to find the, I think it's right at the end, on page 15. There's another material that's in there. And we are working with the watershed on this pervious area.
Okay. Okay, did anybody else have any questions? Okay, I guess we can maybe do the public hearing unless, I guess we'll open it then for the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak about the lift station variances? Anybody ready to speak? I don't see anything. If you're speaking, you must be on mute. Okay, I guess there is no one to speak to this. We're going to close the public hearing for the lift station. Any further discussion? I guess this isn't too much different than what we saw before. Actually, they're really making the lift station itself look nicer, so it looks like a house. That's a, that's a plus. And then better parking for not parking along the road. That's a plus. Anything else? I guess if we're not going to go discuss this anymore, does somebody have a motion then if there seems to be an agreement?
This is Peter, I'll make a motion to recommend the council approve their request. Oh yes, so the requested front yard and wetland setback variances with conditions for L-24 lift in 43. Based on findings of fact outlined in the staff report.
That's you. The blue guy?
So. I can't hear now. Is there a second?
This is Justin, I'll say.
So Justin is going to second it, okay. Nick, you want to go down the list of voting?
Yes, Bob?
Yea.
Damian?
Yea.
Justin?
Yea.
Laura?
Yea.
Peter?
Yes.
Eve?
Yes.
Gary Pettis? All right, that motion passes seven oh. I can let you know, applicant, it will be on the December 7th city council meeting for final action.
Okay, thank you. Okay, on to the next, on to the next variance, we have a setback variance and a riparian view setback for Dave Ingrubritson and Philippa Hartley. You want to tell us about that, Nick?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. The item here is a variance request. It includes a street side setback variance, a side yard setback variance, and a variance from the riparian view shed setback requirement for a new home at 5445 Cedar Point Road. In your staff report, I gave a little bit of a background, but essentially what the applicants are proposing is they're proposing to build a new single-family home, kind of tucked up more closely to Cedar Point Road while maintaining the required 50-foot lake shore setback. Included with this is also the, there's an existing dwelling on the property. The applicants would be proposing to replace that, tear it down and build new in the same footprint and the same elevation, an accessory building. There's also a few other accessory buildings on the site that the applicant would remove and not replace. That's kind of a summary of what they're proposing. In your staff report, I provided the variance criteria, much like we look at all the time, you know, with regards to consistency with the purposes and intent of the city ordinance and consistency with the comprehensive plan. And then there's the three-pronged practical difficulties test, which is reasonableness, unique circumstances not created by the property owner, and the essential character of the locale. Staff feels those have all been satisfied, both for a new construction and for the repurpose or the rebuilding of the existing structure as an accessory building. We sent out notices to property owners within 500 feet. The applicants actually did some due diligence and were able to speak with three nearby property owners who have all written in support of the variance request and the proposal that the applicants have put forward. So with that being said, we would look here for the Planning Commission to open the required public hearing and allow anyone to speak on this item. And then after that, close the public hearing and consider all the information, testimony that they've heard, and make a recommendation to the city council. You know, and that would be supported by findings of fact. In your staff report, findings of fact have been provided for you. And the recommended action would be to motion to the city council to recommend approval of the requested variances, like I said, based on those findings of fact and subject to the certain conditions in your staff report. I do know the applicant here, if you have questions of them, otherwise I am available from staff.
Okay, did the applicant have anything to add to what Nick said?
My name's Mark Williams, I'm the builder on the project. My address is P.O. Box 268 Excelsior, Minnesota. I mean, I guess mainly just to answer any questions, I think the bottom line is it's a very difficult lot built on a peninsula. And Dave and Philippa are, you know, planning on removing a lot of what's there, building a home that's into the hillside, trying to keep the elevation down, so it's kind of minimized from the lake views. And just build a nice home that fits into the local environment. They've kind of reached out to all the local neighbors. I know one of them is, or a couple of them are on this call as well. And I guess I'm just here to answer any maybe specific questions any of you might have, as well as the homeowners are on as well.
Okay, thank you. And I did like that they talked to everybody around them that was adjacent, the way it looked.
They spend a lot of time on the weekends going up and down, introducing themselves to the dogs, as well as the neighbors, until the dogs stop barking. And it was all good, so they're pretty excited about it.
Okay, did anybody from the Plan Commission have some questions?
I have, Mr. Gary Pettis, I have one to start with for Nick. And it has to do with the lift station future site that is there. And that if I read correctly, that that would be eliminated if the house is built. And if that's true, if a lift station is necessary, another one in that area, where is it going to go? And secondly, how did we determine that that site is no longer needed for a lift station?
I'll have to go back through. I don't know that, I mean, there's an existing lift station within the right-of-way or a fire lane, or whatever you want to call it, for Cedar Point, the unimproved right-of-way. I don't know that there is a plan to eliminate that one. Obviously, you know, the city will work with the property owner to hopefully maintain, you know, access to the site. There is some challenging topography as you follow where the right-of-way would extend. But the road, like I said, kind of terminates and it's no longer improved. So, you know, we've kind of, Public Works has went down through this property to get access to that site. And I think through their planning, I mean, that has been, you know, preserved, the access or the ability to go that way has been preserved. As far as, I mean, I can't speak to, you know, a future lift station location. That's more of an engineering or a Public Works question.
Mr. Williams, do you believe that that's been satisfied, what you're dealing with, Nick?
To my knowledge, we're not touching it. I mean, it's, yeah, it's just going to stay as it is. We would have no, I guess we're not doing anything with it. I mean, obviously, we're hooking up our sewer line to it, so it'll, you know, serve the properties as it always has before. I know Mike Kirkwood's across the street, his sewer line runs underneath the driveway, down through the property and connects there as well. So unless the city had some other plans, I mean, we're just planning on hooking up to it. I guess I don't really have any other comments other than that.
Okay, so you're not moving, you're not building anywhere in that easement as far as you're aware?
No.
Okay, thank you.
You're just, you're decreasing the setback, because basically that's the road, right? The road that was never built, there's an easement.
Yeah, I mean, as Nick kind of gently put it, you'd have to be Sir Edmund Hillary to make a road out of that thing. That thing is steep as ever. I mean, you, yeah, it's a ski hill. You couldn't make it into a road. I think it just was the access they always had there. And so I can't speak, I think the current owner, Peter, I think, you know, if they ever had to service it, you know, I think the city just contacted the homeowner and they went over and, you know, went and looked at it. But I think that's about all that's really needed for, to my knowledge.
So do we need to, like, bake in the fact they're going to have to cross the property, or are they going to go down that road to be able to service it?
Well, I believe they've, as, you know, existing conditions, you know, with the property, the way it is, I believe they've, Public Works has went down the common driveway and then looped around the back, you know, where the topography is more friendly to access that and maintain it. I mean, you certainly could add something. I don't know to what extent we, you know, we could, you know, require something like that. But it's certainly something, you know, if you wanted to add in something to that effect, I don't know that I would have any objections. I mean, obviously, you know, we could then take your comments and share that with, you know, engineering, Public Works, potentially the city attorney's office to figure out what we do or don't need to do in this situation. Please certainly could forward that, comment your concern onto the city council for their consideration.
Yeah, because if they ever have to change the pumps out, the best way to get at it is probably going to be through the property versus down the road that's so steep or down the non-road, the easement. Is that true?
It's, to my understanding, nothing would change than what's been there for however many years. But I would have to let Dave and Philippa speak to that as far as a legal issue. I can't speak to that, just that. I mean, the only way to access it is through the property, to my.
Yeah, our understanding from the current property owner is that the city comes in, walks across, services it. That seems perfectly reasonable and is what we figured was going to continue to happen.
Madam Chairman, this is Mike Kirkwood.
Yes.
And I'm the adjacent property owner to the east, and I have been here 27 years and have watched the city truck come down the driveway, sometimes two, three times a week. And they've been very good about staying on top of what we all depend upon is a sewer system and lift system that works very well. So the city's been, I think, very respectful of it. There have been at least two times in the 27 years where they did replace the pump or had to do major maintenance on it. In those situations, they would drive down the pavement, and then if they had to, they would drive across the lawn that would allow them to back their truck with lifting equipment to be right on top of the lift station. And it never seemed to have any significant damage. As I say, it's only been twice in the 27 years that I've been here that they've had to do that. But the city has been warm and friendly help anytime they've come through, and we've always been glad to see them, because we like to keep that thing running.
It is definitely to your guys' advantage. Okay. Any other questions from the commissioners?
Well, I have one question. You said you had built a story and a half to not obstruct the view of your neighbors. How, I can't quite tell from looking at the drawings, I mean, how tall is the building relative to the neighbors? Are they going to be able to see out over it, or?
Yeah, so let me pull that up. So we've talked, obviously, Mike and we are aware that their garage kind of would butt up to the the proposed garage as well. There's also an elevation change. I don't have their elevation. Right now, it shows, I'm just going off the sketch here off the, and this would be on page 35, 71 in your packet. And it's 28, 28 feet to the mid, to the roof midpoint. I guess I don't know how tall Mike's house is, so I couldn't speak. Most of his views, he could speak to that, or in a different direction towards his lake. So it, and then the house actually steps down, just referring to like the garage portion of it. I mean, if you look at the front elevation of the home that we're proposing, that's where the story and a half is. So essentially, it's a rambler with a little attic area, loft storage above the garage, and then, you know, obviously walkout on the lakeside.
Good, thank you.
Peter, this is Mike Kirkwood. I've looked at the drawings very carefully, and clearly, there's going to be a building there that wasn't there before. But I do think that Mark and Philippa and Dave have done a good job of trying to build a house that's useful size, that still doesn't end up being a giant wall outside of our kitchen windows. So it is going to be there, but it isn't so high that it prevents us from seeing around it and even over it from some of our rooms. So we're perfectly fine and appreciative of the effort that they've taken to structure the design to minimize the blockage of our view to the west.
And now the shared driveway, that's going to be between you, Mike, and the new people? Is that true, or?
Yes, yeah, that's, that's sort of a, that's part of the way the property was split. Some of you may recall, Gene Partika from years ago was on the Planning Commission, City Council. He was the owner at the time that I bought the property. So we have a shared driveway. The line runs not quite down the middle, but it's clearly marked here recently. And the, Philippa and Dave and I are, have to do some work down the road to talk about refurbishing the driveway, because it's had some age wear and subsidence. So we're going to get that leveled up at some point and repay it with payers at probably at some point. But that is certainly something we've discussed, and it's a given to the property.
Okay. So really, it's you guys and the shared driveway have to work those issues out. That's not really part of the city at this point.
No.
Yeah. And then I had a question about the accessory building. How many square feet was that?
This is Philippa Hartley. It's 851, I believe, or 853 square feet.
Okay, so it's less than 1,000 square feet.
Yep, small.
Good, okay. Any other questions from the commission? Okay, I guess then we're going to open the public hearing. The public hearing is open. Is there anyone that wanted to speak about this variance?
Well, this is Mike again, and I would, and I'm at 5435 Cedar Point Road. I would speak aggressively in favor of this, this new addition to the neighborhood. This is a property that has languished for probably 20 years. It's really deserving of an upgrade that you see in these sketches. It will be a much more attractive property for people who are going by at boats and visitors coming over to visit and whatever. Some of it because the older, the older house structure, which will be reconfigured into a, into an accessory building, will be even improved by this process. So we're, we're all, I think I speak fairly for the other two neighbors that are not here on the call with us tonight, as we've talked about it, that they are, along with us, very excited to see the significant improvements that will come with this, with this new family in the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to say then, if somebody is not on mute and trying to talk, we're going to say that the public hearing is now closed. Any discussion with the commission? I mean, I'm fine with this. This is a very different, different piece of property. They've done a good job figuring out what's best for everybody. Any other comments?
This is Peter. I went and looked at it, and first off, I'm glad I was able to back out of there without scratching.
You don't want to come on a snowy day, Peter.
You guys have to like each other down on that point, that's for sure.
Yeah, that's going to be real challenging, things in and out of there, I think. But I think it's a great, you know, very thoughtful plan and, but a great setting. They really thought it out well.
I can hear you.
Okay.
But I can't hear it here.
Okay, any other comments? And if not, then do I have a motion?
I'll motion that the variance get approved as, motion to recommend that city council approve the requested side street, side yard, and riparian view shed setback variance at 5445 Cedar Point Road, based on.
I'll second that.
Who is seconding it?
Damian.
Damian, okay, thank you, Damian. And, okay, so we have a second, and.
I'll give a rundown here of the.
Can I just add just a comment before you do that? It's not part of the motion, but we should just double-check about crossing their property to do the lift station. Ask the lawyer if there's anything further required for that. Other than that.
You want to add a sixth condition to that, Madam Chair?
Should we, just to check on it?
Sure, I don't, I have no issue with that.
Do you want to amend your motion then?
Sure, so I'll add conditions one through five and an additional. Sure. So I'll add conditions one through five and an additional condition six to have the city attorney verify or check to see if there's any additional paperwork needed for the city to maintain access to the lift station at 5445 Cedar Point Road.
Okay.
I'll accept the amended motion.
Okay, will that work next?
I think I have something I can go with.
Okay. Okay, sorry about that.
Nope, you're fine.
Let's vote.
I'll give roll call here. So Bob?
Yeah.
Damien?
Yep, yes.
Houston?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Gary Pettis? All right, that motion passes 7:00. The recommendation will be forwarded to the city council for review at their December 7th meeting. So applicants, keep an eye out for that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for doing such a good job working with the neighbors again.
Thank you. And Peter, if you want to come help direct traffic while we're building, I'm all for it. I'll give you a nice yellow vest and some waving wands.
You're gonna need it.
We'll go by phone.
I was thinking boat, it'd be easier.
Well, good luck with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the next interim use permit for the what is this, Minnetoka Orchards? This appears that we didn't get everything sent out for this time, so we're going to just get some information, right, Nick? And then we're going to let people speak that know about this. And then we're going to table this for January. Is that correct, Nick? So that we can get the rest of the people that are notified to be able to speak also.
Yes, Madam Chair, that is correct. I'll give a little bit of a rundown here of the staff report for you guys. And I will take this time to apologize to the applicants, to the property owners on this. Was my mistake only noticing 500 when I should have noticed 1,500. So in effort of fairness, you know, we're going to hold this hearing this evening and allow those that have taken the time out of their evening to call in an opportunity to speak and be part of the record. But like Madam Chair said, we'll look to continue this hearing until the January Planning Commission meeting. That's the next available meeting on the calendar because we canceled the one in December because it falls too close to the holidays. So as of now, it's looking like it might be a January 25th, if the calendar holds correctly for that. But like I said, I'll give a little bit of a rundown here of kind of what the the request ultimately is. I do see we've got the applicants, both buyers and sellers well represented here, as well as some other individuals who are maybe willing to, are interested in speaking. But essentially what's happening here is there's an interim use permit to run agricultural entertainment activities. You know, this has kind of evolved over the years. I think the shoppers started back sometime 1980 years is when about I could find. They started with the agricultural entertainment activities, which was the orchard and honey. And over the years, it has slowly evolved. Back in 2005-ish, I want to say, is kind of when the discussion of this type of activities and where it would and wouldn't be permitted came about. And I think in 2007, the city introduced the interim use permit ordinance. Because previously, everything had been done through, through conditional use permit. But what an interim use permit is essentially it's the, it's very similar to a conditional use except for it is specific to an individual and it's specific for a certain amount of time. Whereas a conditional use permit runs with the land so long as conditions are met. You can attach conditions to an interim use permit, as you'll see in the the current IUP that the shoppers have in your staff report. Yeah, that's kind of the big difference between interim use permit. And that's why we're here is that the shoppers are looking to sell Minnetoka Orchards and Painters Creek Winery to Frank and Esther. So the, the part of the sale process is to get their names included on the the IUP. So that's really the extent of the request. The current IUP runs through 2023, I think, August of 2023. So there is still some time left on that for the the applicant to operate the IUP and then obviously would have to look to, you know, seek an extension of that IUP once the expiration date approaches. As part of this, the shoppers have agreed to stay on and live in the house and help kind of facilitate the transition from the shopper family to Frank and Esther moving forward. But, you know, in the staff report, there's, you know, it outlines kind of what an interim use permit is, the process and so on. But yeah, getting back to kind of where this all started is you know, the, an IUP, I think this might be the only one the city of Minatrista has. So obviously, I misread the ordinance and did not send the sufficient notice. So that's why I think, you know, it's important to give those that took time out of their evening, like I said, to comment tonight. But there will be another notice that will go out in advance of the January Planning Commission meeting to the additional 1,000 feet, so 1,500 foot radius total and see anyone that wants to speak. So I would say for the commission to, you know, open the necessary public hearing, allow those to speak that are present this evening. Have any discussion that you feel relevant and then ultimately the recommended act should be a motion to table the request until the January Planning Commission meeting for further review.
Okay, so they currently have a conditional use permit for both the orchards and the winery, correct? And that is permanent on the land?
The the orchard operation and the agricultural activities, that's under the IUP. The farm winery is a separate conditional use permit and that will run with the land.
Okay. Okay, so I guess we'll go ahead and open the the hearing.
See if the applicant or any of them want to speak first.
I was just thinking, I I want the applicant to speak first in the public hearing. How's that?
That works for me.
Okay, so let's open the public hearing and let's start with the applicant in the public hearing and then we'll go down the list.
Yeah, I don't know. I guess I can, looking at the attendees here, I see Craig Shopper is here. Did you have anything to add or any comments you want to make? Seeing not.
Okay, well then.
Do we have anyone else? We do have, it looks like Frank is here. One of the buyers is here. I see his real estate agent, Steve Grodding, is here as well. Either of you gentlemen want to speak?
Sure, this is Frank Weigel. You know, we're just, we're really
You need to give your, your address also, please?
Yeah, currently we're at 4496 North Shore Drive in Mound, Minnesota. Technically, Mound's address. And I'm really excited about the opportunity here. We were kind of looking into, you know, that orchard. You know, creating one ourselves and this one popped up on the market and this, it's also one that we've visited over the years. We love the place and so we're really excited. You know, transitioning and also, you know, be good neighbors.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Nick, you want to go down the list, I guess?
Here it is.
Yes. I will go down. This is just some alphabetical order to the list I've got here. So no certain order, but I'll just call your name out. And if you'd like to speak, please feel free to do so. Keep the comments right around a couple minutes if you could, please. But first on the list is Kathy Zanstra. Do you wish to comment? Give your name and your address?
Yes, thank you. I'm Kathy Zanstra. I'm at 6625 County Road 26. I'm right across the street from the orchard. And thank you for going in alphabetical order the backwards way. I'm usually last.
Must be Kathy that gets you on the front of the list.
Yeah, but it pays me last, so it has its pros and cons. I have lived here a little bit over 30 years. And in the very beginning, it took a little while to get used to the traffic, you know, during just the orchard time. But Lowell and Phyllis were always so kind and gracious and helped divert the traffic. We let people park at our lawn because they only had the one access for parking. And as time went on and they opened the lower end, the traffic really diminished here. They didn't need the police reserves coming in to take care of the traffic. People were parking more cautiously because it's a terrible hill that comes down. And people who don't know any better just pull right out. So that big parking space helped exponentially. When they opened up the wedding part, I was really excited to see that. A new venue that came into Minatrista. And I know a lot of people who have been married there and have really enjoyed it. Living this close, we don't have any problems with the music. And with the winery open, I have never once seen the police have to come because of alcohol consumption. I have never seen anybody walking up and down County Road 26 because of, you know, drinking too much or something. Everything is kept very family. And I couldn't have a better neighbor than what I do. I'll be sad to see them go, but I, I would be even sadder to see the orchard and the winery go as well.
Thank you. Thank you. So Nick?
All right, next on my list, I've got a Harold and Lori Catola. I don't know if you guys are on mute or not.
Did you still wish to speak?
Lori Catola? Wish to speak?
All right, can you hear me now? This is Lori Catola.
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. So Harold.
You need to give your address first.
Yep, we have lived at 6724 Fox Ridge Circle since 2003. We are not adjacent to the Minnetoka Orchards, but we are very close to the orchards. And our experience has been a little bit different than Ms. Zanstra's experience. When we first moved in in 2003, we really had no issues with the orchard. At that time, it was limited to apple picking activities, family activities, hayrides, those kinds of things. And that, that was never a problem from our perspective. It was, it was actually very nice to have that in the neighborhood. But over time, the business model expanded to include organized events and weddings. And that's really when the issues started happening from our perspective. And from our perspective, the primary issue is the noise. This is a very quiet environment. There is no background noise. I'm sure many of us have the opportunity to live in this very rural and peaceful environment. And so sound carries a long ways. And so when the wedding and corporate events started with the music and the DJs and the amplified electric guitars, that could be heard all over the area, easily heard at our house, even with the windows closed. And it was really, quite frankly, a nuisance and it would go well into the night. And in addition to the, to the noise from the music and the DJs, people would be outside hooting and hollering and carousing late into the night. And so that really, from our perspective, really destroyed the peaceful environment we were looking for when we moved out here. We made multiple calls to the police over the years. I'm sure that I alone have made half dozen, maybe a dozen calls to the police about the noise. I'm not sure exactly what happens when I make those calls. It certainly didn't seem to have any impact. So I do appreciate the opportunity be able, to be able to talk about that here with the planning commission. And I hope that they will consider that impact to the, to the neighborhood because it does seem very out of line with what the rest of the neighborhood is like. It, it doesn't seem appropriate to have that kind of activity and those kind of noise levels in this particular environment. So we're, we're very thankful actually that this will be tabled until January because I hope that will give the commission a little bit of time to consider and reflect on what kind of activities are appropriate at the Minnetoka Orchards and what impact it's really having. And so we look forward to having more discussion in January as well about this.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Nick?
All right, next in order, I've got a Kent Lee and a Zina Sumava.
Alrighty, thanks, gang. This is, this is Kent. We're at 6651 Fox Ridge Circle. We're, we're an immediate neighbor right behind Minnetoka Orchards. I think our comments would be limited this evening. You know, to, you know, reiterate Kathy Zandra's points about the Schafers being fantastic neighbors and they have been good, good people to be with. We have, we've got really, I think, only one issue though, and that's, and that, that is the the noise which is connected with the, the wedding events. The not the noise from any other events. The noise from the wedding events, in our opinion, is, is a function of the wedding parties being held in, inside of a tent. You know, with, with tent canvas type walls and not, not being held in a, in a permanent structure which would completely mitigate the noise. And, and, and so that would be, I think that would be our observation here. We noted that in the, in the IUP, there's language about structures. And, and, and this might be something that, that people want to consider, even the new owners want to, want to consider in order to make the, the noise less, less disruptive. Because frankly, on some evenings, it's, it interferes with our ability to have, to have, you know, the, the kind of, you know, evenings that we would like to have. So that's all I would say.
All right, next in the list, I've got Marvin Johnson.
Yes, Marvin Johnson, 6325 County Road 6 Independence. I believe you had a letter that was mailed to, to the city. Is that right?
Yes, we did receive that just today, so I wasn't able to distribute it to everyone. I saw you I saw you were on the list and I figured, if you'd like, I certainly can read that letter for everyone. Otherwise, if you want to pass along your comments. But we did receive that today and obviously would include that with the future information for the January meeting.
Okay, I would appreciate if you'd give it to them for a future meeting. I've been in complete support of the shoppers and everything that they've done. We, when it comes to, I live at the north end of the wetlands, so it's quite a distance from the shoppers. But we, I've really enjoyed hearing the music on the night of the weddings. We also have the Olo facilities that are a little bit to the northwest of us. And I can hear them as much as I can hear the shoppers when they have the wedding. So I'm in complete support of what they've done. They've been wonderful neighbors. And I would like to see them be able to pass this business on to some people who are really interested in it. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right, I think she's with the shoppers, named Slava Daskaluk. I said that wrong. Any interest in speaking?
Yeah, hello, this is Slava Daskaluk. My address is 2745 North Court, Northeast in Blaine, Minnesota, 55449. And I actually represent the buyers. I'm his real estate agent, Frank and Esther. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I think that Frank and Esther are super excited about this. And they're looking to keep the business very similar. And I think that everybody that has been around the Minnetoka Orchards love that atmosphere. And I think they are excited that they are able to find buyers such as Frank and Esther that can continue that legacy. I know I myself have been there with my kids a few times. And we love the place and we hope to keep it similar. I'm sure the noise will be considered in the future of their owning. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thanks.
Hey Nick?
Okay, Nick? Oh, Gary?
All right, I got one other caller that I wasn't able to identify. If you would call in only. Yep?
Yep. This is Gary Pettis. I want to be on because I live next door. So I need to-
No, I understand.
Yeah, okay.
I just, yeah, you're just, you're towards the bottom. But I don't know, I got a caller who maybe called in later on in the meeting. Are you interested in speaking on this item? Whoever is making noise right now, do you care to speak? Hearing not. Go ahead, Gary, the floor is yours.
First of all, I'd like to say that, you know, we've been here about 27 years. And when Lowell and Phyllis were running it, it was absolutely phenomenal. They still had weddings and sometimes they got a little bit loud. But probably once every two or three weeks, Lowell would walk around to the neighbors and make sure that everything was fine. Was there any littering? Was there noise too loud or whatever? And he'd run a very, very nice operation. Once the winery came in, things changed drastically. We have a screen porch and we're very blessed with that, which is fairly large. And we spent a lot of time out there in the summer. And right now, when the noise is coming in, when the weddings are going on, if we want to have the TV on, we have to have it up around 50 to be able to hear it. The noise is deafening. It's hard to have a conversation. Numerous times, I have called over there while this is going on. What typically happens is that it gets turned down for a while and then it blasts up again. It's a very challenging place to live in the summer where it used to be very nice. Also, my understanding is from looking back at the items on the conditional use permit, it would be hard to tell, because it says they have to be in an enclosed area this has to take place for the music. It would be hard to tell that they weren't outside. They may be in a tent. But they're certainly not within a building. The other thing is that it says they can only have two events a week. Numerous weeks, there have been more than two events a week. And so, it's not necessarily that we don't want them to be successful. Or at least, we want them, we want to live in harmony with them. And with the noise that happens, it's very difficult. With the amount of times it's happening, it is very difficult. The traffic is a problem. During the orchard, when the orchard is open for the park, it goes all the way. I'm at 6200 County Road 26. I'm about a half a mile from 110. There are days that it's almost parking on both sides of the street, almost all the way to 110. We need, if that's to continue, and I know that's a county road and we don't have much jurisdiction over it. But there needs to be somebody to make sure that that traffic moves freely. We can sit literally, my wife, if she wants to leave and go someplace, she can sit literally for 15 minutes and not be able to get out of our driveway. And at night, when it's closing down, they definitely need somebody to help escort the people out and get them out of the entrances that are there and the exits that are there. It's another challenge at that time. And I didn't see anything, and I may be wrong, and maybe just follow some other statute with the city, as to what time they close or have to stop the music. That definitely needs to be looked into also. And it probably should be somewhat shorter than it is. I think it usually goes 9:30 or 10 o'clock now. I think that's really all that I have right now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anybody else on this that would wish to speak? Yes, this is Kathy Zanstra again. I'd like to make an additional comment. The events are only till 10:00 PM. They originally started at midnight, but due to it was brought up, I guess, at one time that it was running too late, they had changed it to 10:00. I have more noise every day and night with speeding crotch rockets and heavy mufflers of kids speeding up and down this road, shooting off fireworks all year round. The apple orchard and the events is just a very short time in a 12-month period. You know, they're only getting a couple of months out of that. And the winery hasn't really hit its full potential yet, so they don't really have the traffic. I understand the traffic down at the end is much heavier now than it is up here. But people get by. I mean, it's running a business. And it would just be terrible to let it go just because some people aren't happy with music. Frankly, I can hear the music and I enjoy it. That's it. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else? Otherwise, we're going to, how do I just table this then? Public hearing, Nick, and it'll open, or we'll continue it in January, correct?
Well, I think we should get a motion. So one of the commissioners would just make a motion to table the request until January, get a second, and then we'll run down the list.
Okay, I'll make a motion to table it until January. So that's Laura. Who wants to second?
I'll second.
Justin will second.
Justin will second? Okay, so-
Yep.
Go ahead, Nick.
All right, I will give a rundown. Up first is Bob.
Yay.
Damian.
Yay.
Justin.
Yay.
Laura.
Yay.
Peter.
Yes.
Eve.
Yes.
And Gary Pettis. Gary Pettis? All right.
Yes.
That motion passed at 7:00 to table this discussion and continue the public hearing until the January 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Notices will go out again to everyone within 1,500 feet this time. So if you're within 500 feet, you'll get it again. And then we'll continue this hearing at that date. Hopefully, the applicants got a little information here, maybe can do a little bit of groundwork with some of the comments we've received if necessary. Then we'll reconvene on this topic in January for a recommendation.
Okay, good. Yeah, like you said, now the applicants have an idea of what people think about. Okay. On to the next. Thanks, everybody, for coming and making your comments. And now, going on to business items, there are none. Staff, did you, that was the next item on the agenda, did you want to update us on anything?
I'm trying to think. I mean, obviously, that sketch plan went to the council at their meeting in November. I did not attend that meeting. David Abel, my supervisor, did. But we have John Jemperlin on the call here, a council member. He can potentially shed some light for the Planning Commission. I know it was a pretty lengthy discussion we had regarding that sketch plan at our last meeting. I will also say the solar topic is still being discussed at the council level. I think something may be getting presented at their next meeting. But again, maybe John can chime in on that. Otherwise, looking forward to January, we don't have any more meetings for the rest of the year. So hopefully, everyone is able to have a safe and happy holiday season. We'll be back at the end of January with at least the winery, or not the winery, the interim use permit in the orchard discussion and anything else that may come in up through the December deadline.
So you don't have anything else right now?
As of now, no, but they've got a month essentially to make any applications.
Okay, and whose term is ending now at the end of this?
I believe it's Damian and Bob were the planning commissioners whose terms are up. Bob and Damian both have said they're interested in another term. I did receive Bob's paperwork and I expect to see Damian's hopefully shortly.
Okay, so then they'll be sworn in if the council agrees? Is that how it works? I don't remember.
Yeah, they'll do their appointment. Yeah, they'll do their appointments. The council will probably at the first meeting in January, maybe in December, I'm not sure yet. But yeah, then they'll, Damian and Bob would take the oath of office again in the end of January at that meeting.
Okay. Is that it for staff then?
I think that kind of covers some of the recent topics we discussed and things to look forward to. Like I said, I'm sure John can shed a little bit of light on a couple of items. I updated you on where the council may be at with those and anything else that's going on at the council level.
John, did you have anything on the council that you wanted to share?
Yes. Good evening, everybody. Nick did touch on a couple of things that I wanted to update you on. At our October 19th council meeting, we had, as a council, agreed and asked the city to bring back a resolution on denying the solar farm based on all the work you put into it. And obviously, we heard from a great deal of neighbors. We felt we had some points for denial. So the resolution came back up on our November 9th meeting, which would have made it official. At that time, we decided with legal counsel to table the denial until our December meeting. We have legally 60 days, so from our October meeting, basically almost up to Christmas, we have 60 days to give an official answer. I can't say much more about it. The reason it was tabled is because there is potential issues. And as there is possibility of some litigation, that's why it was tabled at the time. So in December, there will have to be a positive or negative, whichever way you look at it, vote made, which could have or may have other ramifications. So for the time being, that solar farm is still in limbo. However, we did, at the meeting on the 9th, did unanimously agree to put a moratorium on any future for the fall, next year, the moratorium runs for a year and doesn't have to last that long. But in that time period, we've asked the city to do a study of all solar energy systems and to consider the different types and how they may or may not impact the situation in our city. This, of course, as you recall, was only a use that could be used in ag preserve in all the other zoning districts in the city. It would have had to go through a conditional use permit. 2015, the ordinance was created that put the ground solar farms, or it wasn't a farm term, it was just solar, ground solar, it put it into play in the ag preserve. There was a belief that the ordinance was probably not structured as well as it should. And I wasn't there in 2015, but just my reading of it gave me that opinion. So in the meantime, we put the ordinance into play that puts a moratorium on any new, anybody else coming in and asking, there can't or won't be one until we've had time to step back and look at the original ordinance to see how it can be fine-tuned or whatever needs to be done. So that was passed. Back to your site plan for the 90-acre development there off of 110 West. There were two issues that the council had to address. And if the first one wasn't agreed to, then the discussion on the site plan was mute. And the first one was that that area is currently listed as urban, I forget the terminology, Nick probably knows it better than me, urban development. But the consensus was, we just spent a year and a half to two years working on the 2040 plan, of which Mr. Vickery, you're very familiar with. So we had people involved. We had a resident group that was giving input. And we had a couple of years to put the 2040 plan together. And as such, that area, that 90 acres, or almost 90 acres, there's one other lot in there that's zoned R2, I believe. But that whole area was left, left out of any development for the foreseeable future. And so, it's not in the MUSA plan either, where we could run, readily have sewers being ran in there. And to get around that, we'd have to put in a request for an amendment- And to get around that, we'd have to put in a, a request for an amendment to the comp plan. Um, this vote also, if we were gonna do it, the vote had to be a majority vote, had to be four-one or five-oh, could not be just three-two. And the consensus, very early in our discussion, was obvious that, uh, we were not gonna be able to agree to ask for a, a, um, change to the comp plan. So the issue was mute, it kinda ended there, there wasn't a vote on even doing a comp plan request, pre- provision request, and so there was never any discussion on the site plan. So that one is basically dead for the time being. Also, on the, uh, the last meeting, we had the, one of the the union contracts come up. At the end of, uh, twenty-twenty, the union contract for our public works staff expires. There are three-year ter- three-year, uh, contracts, and so we've got two people on, from the council that serve on a personnel committee, meet with the city staff, and that's the mayor, Ms. Whalen, and Pam Mortensen, uh, serve. So they go through a discussion, and like any, um, labor contract, you kinda go back and forth, and we got the, the requested new contract and looked it over. There's a lot of verbiage changes and, uh, changes in, uh, banking of, uh, time, labor, or your, your vacation, sick leave, sick leave, et cetera. Uh, biggest thing from my point of view, there's a nine percent pay increase spread over the next three-year contract. Um, starts out at, at, uh, two-and-a-half percent, uh, in twenty-twenty-one, and then it's three-and-a-quarter and three-and-a-quarter in twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three. So that was approved as well. Um, what else? Oh, we had, uh, another one special meeting. Anytime there's an election in the year of an election, municipal election, the mayor and council has to, within three to ten days after the election, has to meet caucus and certify the election results. Uh, you may all be aware of them. Uh, there was, uh, the mayor's seat was up, and two council seats were up. Uh, Mr. Molitor had elected not to rerun, and Shannon Bruce had elected to run for mayor. So there was Ms. Whalen and Ms. Bruce running for mayor, and then there were three running for the two council seats. As you're probably all aware at this stage, uh, um, Lisa was re-elected for another four-year term, and the two council seats will be filled by Ann McGregor and Kathleen Rifkin. So that was certified as well. Um, I wanna thank you, all you on the commission, for the work you put in. Obviously, variances are one thing, and, and maybe, I don't think they become second nature, they're all have their own twists and turns and have to be looked at, and you have to take time to put energy into studying them. Obviously, a couple of things we just had lately, the solar farm and the ninety-acre development, that's, to me, is a whole different ballgame, especially the solar farm, things that the city hasn't seen before, or a development, a very large a development, uh, coming down the pike so soon after Woodland Cove. So, um, we appreciate the work you put into it, and we obviously read all your comments and the insight you've had into it, and hopefully it helps us, and or not hopefully, it does help the council make decisions. Wanna thank you again for all of that work. Uh, trust you have a safe Thanksgiving, and obviously, a happy and safe holidays, being you don't have another meeting until January. So any questions, I'll see if I can answer them.
Yeah, John, this is Steve Lemoore. Uh, when do you think the solar, uh, thing will come back up on the council agenda?
It'll be on our December, December seventh meeting. It's the only meeting we have in December, and me and we have a sixty-day legal window to answer, we need to answer before the middle of December. So there will be a, a decision made by the council, um, on the December, at the December seventh meeting.
Great, thank you.
And that moratorium doesn't affect the current applicant, right?
No, it does not. Only future.
Anything else? And thank you, John, for serving on the council. That's, I think, even a little bit more responsibility than what we do. Um, anything else?
Interesting.
You have lots of help, though.
Yes.
Anything else, anybody? Otherwise, we'll go to adjourning. The last thing on the agenda, do I have a motion?
A motion to, uh, adjourn.
I second.
Okay, it was Damian first, who was second?
Steve.
Steve, okay. Okay, rundown.
All right, I'll- I got Bob.
Yay.
Damian.
Uh, yay, happy Thanksgiving, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Justin.
Yay.
Laura.
Yay.
Peter.
Yay.
Steve.
Yes.
And Gary Pettis.
That sounds like-
Motion passes seven-oh.
Okay, so everybody have some good holidays, and we will see you in January.
Please be safe, guys.
Yep.